Everyone, welcome to the board meeting on July 10. I'm quite sure we have it on 7:08. Kathy, can you please do a roll call? Okay, Simmons?
Present.
Nelson?
Present.
Briggs?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Paredes?
I'm here.
Huckabee?
Here.
Fourth. Here, and we have a floor. So the first item on the agenda, the audience comments, and there's no signatures. Any last, any take? Third item on the agenda, superintendence board, Dr. Smith.
Great, thank you. Had a wonderful day today, the district registration, the end of one of six. And the last date is July 19th for registration here. We will have kindergarten registration, residency verification also on August 3rd. Believe it or not, our staff worked with over 300 families today, just today alone. It was incredible, it was smooth, it was very well thought out. We're looking forward to having a very effective day. So thanks to all the D-161 staff members who are here to work with our family. See verification today from ISB that we received a meet requirements rating for a response to the EPA audit back in 2015, 2016. That's just good because it crosses it off the list, means that our special ed department is meeting the requirements in areas such as racial and ethnic discrepancies, completion of evaluations, audit findings and responses. And really just kudos to the Smith department for taking that information and responding to it as well. Since our last board meeting, all of our new administrators did begin last June, July 5th. Welcome Fred, Lisa, Jennifer to the team. And they've been very busy, not only working in their buildings, but certainly with Mr. Lovell and Miss Crawford as well, there's a lot of information to digest. And they've done a great job, that's often a very strong start. And then finally, happy to report, we'll be able to return to a number of offices tomorrow. The dust has been abated, the offices have been painted, and now we'll start moving, yeah, it's back. Working on the satellite, if you come back with Mr. Paredes and I, we're in the satellite office, so it'd be nice to get home. So thank you to Scott and his team, they completed everything on time, under budget. It really means a lot. We're talking about fiscal responsibility, management dollars, so thank you to operations and maintenance partners.
Any questions? Next item on the agenda, consent? Approval of consent agenda items listed below. The eighteen minutes of board meeting, board of education meetings, June 12. Executive session, June 12, special board education meeting, June 26. The executive session, June 26. Item C, approval of bills. Item D, approval of payroll. Item E, approval of personal support. And item F, approval of school handbooks. And please hit a motion to approve consent items. Mr. Huckabee? Mr. Paredes? Second. Yes?
Do we not have a signed number on the bills anymore? You don't like that?
You know what, actually, we usually do keep the bills separate because it is one specific function.
But pull now?
Yep, that wasn't by request. I'm fine if you want to do that, but I didn't see any reference, any specific board member on the motion.
We left the last two.
No, I didn't last time. We did them on the consent agenda, which is a separate question, which I find that unless that reviewer, primary reviewer has issues that they want to bring up. But I don't see a primary reviewer signing this one. I just didn't know if we had decided to change that. It's kind of a long-standing policy. It's available to everybody, but we typically have one person every moment who has assigned to it.
No, I agree. So does that mean that a board member is not reviewed?
I usually, I did.
So would the, would members still comfortable pulling that out and going back to the way we used to do it so that we could call it out and that the board member could actually review the bills actually and bring that motion up? Or are you fine having it as part of the consent agenda item meeting approved and voted?
I would be more comfortable having it as a separate item until maybe if we moved, once we move toward any committee, whether it's the planning committee, that would be something falling under the umbrella. But as for right now, until we have significant change like that, I would prefer.
Right, totally, yeah. Anyone have an issue?
I'm flexible though.
Just one clear. So beyond, like is I review it, but is there something else besides what I got? So just making sure that the person was responsible that said, yes, I look at.
Historically, what we used to do, I want to say about four years ago, we had a big box of bills. And it would actually show up, you know, you'd use one board member to go through each and every paper bill. And that's why they were assigned to that specifically. Since we went to a paperless version of that, and then we still assigned one board member to rotate. And I think the benefit of this, certainly when I was a newer board member, was that it didn't necessitate that you bore the responsibility of something that needed, you were 100% fluid in, and so, you know, just gave you that extra sense of, you know, better really scrutinize this because you're the person that's supposed to be doing this, even though the expectation is everybody will look at all the bills. Because those are in fact available to all board members online to board docs. But, you know.
So there isn't anything in addition to what Fran makes available?
Right.
You know, so you are going through, but it does certainly, you know, in any follow-up questions you have on any of those items, you can follow up with Fran or Dana beforehand, or you can bring it here. But that also allows the board the opportunity to actually bring specific questions about something, except some of them, I mean, we can still that again, but I agree, I think when it's in, when it's part of the consent agenda list of items, I don't want us to be too quick to say, yes, let's vote yay and keep going. So maybe at least for now, we'll pull that out and vote on that separately. For this meeting, we can go ahead and approve as is, but going forward, we can pull that out and go back to the way that we were doing it.
Is that, so I almost have our consent agenda as the handbook, too? So if we have questions about the handbook, should we ask them before we change the vote for consent or later?
I think typically you're asking if you remove from the agenda and they're on.
Yeah, what's that? You can ask that we pull it out of the consent agenda? And then we can talk about it, and then we can vote.
Okay, I'd like to.
Okay. So let me restate my motion to have a motion to approve consent agenda items as listed below, with the exception of the approval of the school handbook. Mr. Huckabee? First, Mr. Paredes, second. Kathy, can you do a roll call, please? Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Fourth. Yes, and the motion was approved. Approval of the school handbook. We have a motion to approve the school handbook. So Huckabee is my second. Dr. Briggs? Kathy, can you do a roll call, please? I'm sorry, no roll call, discussion's going on. I'll get this down. Discussion, is there any discussion on the school handbook?
So I, I'm page 55. Oh, Pete Parker, sorry. It's under, I don't know what this category is, participation in activities. So there seem to be a lot of conversation around this eighth grade quarterly reward matrix. And I don't know how important it is that this piece is actually in the handbook or not, maybe is, but.
Are you talking about the diversity system?
It's called steps and tardies attendance of GPA, and what it takes to get to go to the talent show, the black carding, the field trip, the late night. So it seems, in my mind, that there are some challenges with gathering points, especially if you're a poor performing student, but try very hard. So you struggle to get a high GPA, you struggle to get there, and suddenly you find yourself working hard but not really going anywhere academically, and now you have the potential to be penalized for some struggles that you might not be able to overcome. And then also, whether or not, you know, why is a talent show that's in school activity worth 75 points, which, and then a field trip away from the school is 10 points less, which seems like a greater responsibility and greater penalty. I don't want to make one on each little thing, but when you have a matrix like this, it's almost like you have to account for every scenario. So what happens if we have a really high performing student, but really poor behavior? Is that the thing? Or low performing, but excellent behavior, is that the thing? And so this, I just know because I heard a lot of buzz about this, and I did some calculations myself, and found that, wow, you can't go to a talent show that's at your school because you did bad in school, you had a couple mixed up, and your parent got in there. So, I don't know, those are thoughts on this.
Yeah, so I would say that those concerns were shared probably from a few different places. And the challenge is responding to a document that's been worked on by a number of staff members up until this point, kind of be laterally without their input. And I know that it was very important to Mr. Hunter that this heart, that teacher voices were shared in this. I'll tell you, a lot of concerns about this specifically, and a lot of faith in people working with our kids' home department, and with the conversation about ways to validate students and their contributions. I think we can address, I don't know, the spirit of this, but also opportunities for kids. And just because it's a period does not mean that we can't address it.
Okay, can I, I believe with something a discussion we had in the springtime regarding if there is something that is a part of the school year as an academic thing, or a part of the school culture, similar to graduation, would this qualify as one of those events by which a student has a right to, provide they're not, you know, shown gain to the ability?
Yes. I think there are, there are a number of opportunities for conversations around this content.
Is the point, Dana, that, you know, we had this talent tech education, pilots got the call. Actually trouble with that question, I can tell you, but I'm recovered. It doesn't, you know, I get pretty bored after two pages. But we have schools starting in 45 days here, and we have some new staff members, and kind of need to sign off and just move on, you know, it's probably far.
Yes, we have to start. I would expect that the handbooks for 2018, 19 will look structurally different, I think there are a lot of ways to organize information. A little bit differently, we rely on the parents with the quick shots, but they're looking more than, and then really get to the content consistency of this. A number of people have concerns about this and want to talk about it, and I think we have had some structural conversation.
So would it be fair to say that it's a case that you really want to lose school? Or you should really look at it as a case that makes space and instead of you, that it's a risk?
I think in conversations with the administration, they want to create opportunities for kids as opposed to looking at them whenever possible. So there are situations that need to be reviewed, I would expect that there are.
Is there somebody's expression we would ultimately want this, as opposed to, no, it's happening, it's so important, you can't go to the field trip.
I did say that that wouldn't happen because it could.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not just, I'm just saying, moving forward, because I think this has come up over the years, where, and again, you don't read it, of course you're going to be surprised, sure, and suddenly it's there. But at the same time, to what degree have we looked at the current issues? Can we make sure that we have been out in front of it to, oh, it's changed, this is something under review, this is what we want you to pay special attention to, because it's come up in the past, and we don't want anyone to be surprised from people.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I think there's a communication piece around it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a very important part, because I do, and certainly some of the rumblings that I heard was that when this came out this past year, it wasn't until sometime during the very end, and at that point it's, I mean, so the communication piece on how we get out in front of this, and whether or not it even required us a deeper conversation and understanding here for this large community, communication piece happens to.
There's all the buzz and the work around this, right? In Facebook discussion, I heard people writing about it. I mean, does anyone actually know who didn't go to something and they genuinely do it with a server, or should people, you know, write this on?
Or students that went that didn't qualify?
Yeah, that's, I agree with that, too, but I guess it seemed to me at the time I heard a lot of general complaints about any of this, I didn't hear complaints from anyone. And I did a complaint, too, it's clearly not at risk of hitting this problem. So I'm not convinced it's a real problem, that happens to be information on it. It's in the handbook, it's clear. I think that, you know, we need a clear direction for parents to move the dollar pretty, and maybe it's a pure fine. If that's the direction that's written there, and I'm, so it is what it is. But the discussion of whether that point should be changed based on, you know, actual facts, not generic claims about GM, I didn't have the impression, at least amongst the people I've heard about from, that it was actually a problem for you, in terms of the intent, but more of a theory. But in any event, I guess I would say we should prove the handbook, yes, it is, it's the guy who can have, who can go over it, and it's not perfect. If I wrote it, I would delete many pages, but, but it is what it is, and we have what is important things that, that should be, that could be made.
Part of the cognitive dissonance, the conflict is that it's counter to effective research and restoring practices. And you can't, it's hard to add demerits on the same page as a restored paragraph on conservative practices, and fixing harm that's been done when you are applying punishment to this. So I think those are some things we'll have to come up with.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns?
I think there are a few other things, but we'll talk about the handbook at another time.
For sure.
Yeah. And then there's like, there's some dates that are wrong, I'm sure that I'm just going to go through them. Do you have your comments written down?
57 pages. I read this cover to cover, and so does my son. It's like a serious document at my house, and like, he can cite every single rule that there is, and whether or not it's being upheld or not. Blue shirts don't cover votes, or like, you can't have polls in certain parts of your building, but blue shirt doesn't actually cover that. So blue shirt really only deals with people who are in violation from the waste of, like, so this is like a live document. I hope, that's why I'm kind of hesitant with it. I'd be happy to write my comments down.
And then, who was that?
Because did the calendar, the calendar again, for the new school year, was that to say that it must be going into the sun?
The new calendar?
It should.
Should be to say.
It should be.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Simmons?
Fourth.
Yes, the motion is passed. My last construction project summer for the summer of 2018.
Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, for the time here. I'll talk to you about these next round of things that are looking to take place here at Blossmore. I wanted to kind of step back real quick and just, you know, recap, you know, the process of where we have here. In fact, in 2013, we issued, or, you know, submitted to the state, the senior life safety survey. So there's priority A's that have to happen within one year, priorities B's that have to happen in five years. There are conces that are kind of recommendations or observations of things that might be something that would be important to take place in the kind of upcoming years and the on-ramp. As of today, the, all the priority A items at all the school facilities have been taken care of, or long have been taken care of. We're in the process of handling some more of the priority B items. There are a lot of those facilities at Blossmore Hills from what I updated on the last board meeting. And then, so the next round of 2018, I'd say 2018 for the summer of next year, so that the priority Bs have to be completed by the end of 2018. So we're kind of working through the process to kind of identify those remaining priority B items, and then kind of schedule that for work to be taking place, for documents to be generated, bids to be taken, so that work takes place next summer, so that all the priority B items are handled. So this is just kind of giving you an overview of what is kind of expected and going forward, or what is unlisted, identified as health by safety items. So really, the two facilities that have remained with items right now are Heatherhill and Parker Junior High. Heatherhill Elementary is, you know, some of those items are both, both listed up there, including, you know, some insulated metal panels, some classroom-based cabinets that are, some excessive wear, that have been approved for as a safety item, some exterior metal wall panels, there's some, some depicted up here, I know it just looks like panels here, but some of them are, the seams are starting to lose their seal, and they can be sealed, some of the panels are starting to rust from the road. We'll look at, you know, the best ways to handle those for the bulk of what's going on at Heatherhill, is just boilers, you know, air hanging units, and mechanical systems that need to be replaced, that have reached their end of their useful lifespan, and so any further use is just, you know, wearing, continuing to wear down these systems, and it's their time to replace. And that's kind of the bulk of the items that have been identified at Heatherhill. Parker Junior High, this one is listed as a priority B item. I know this is going to be that, one of those spaces that's going to require some kind of in-depth coordination with the administration, it's that, this is a mezzanine that's up at the north gym. So this is a mezzanine where kind of nothing is currently right now, that, there's empty equipment and certain things up there. But the issue with this space is there, there are two doors exiting out into the hallway that's, that interior hallway that's, you know, right there in front of the north gym. Technically, it's not co-compliant egress. Entering stairs, unenclosed stairways, down into just the hallway, without a dedicated path of exit is what the problem with that space is. So some of the challenges that arose from this one are one of the construction of that, their current classrooms are in there now, but just north of the north gym used to be where the library was. And then the new library, Gas Hill Media Center, kind of converted those into classrooms. But when that library was put into place, it closed down the vestal field where the stairs used to just come down into vestal field and out to the north end. And so now it's kind of closed, created an interior corridor that just kind of holds its, you know, a non-compliant condition. And so we're going to look at potential, what steps we can do to kind of alleviate that as a non-compliance issue. But it's a little bit challenging in just how to get people out of the building. It's currently, I mean, it is a condition that's existed for many, many years, with the definition having its own base. So it is not a definition that's new of Parker Junior High, that it's bad, you know, compliant as a, as a machine on a life safety. So that's going to be one of the items that's going to be discussed, you know, most of the time.
This is one of those items that we've had a lot of conversation around. We've gone everywhere from figuring out how to make an egress to the outside so that we can use the space, to is it worth that kind of money to do it? Or we can just close it off as unusable space? To can we make it into just a storage area? To can we use it for minimal use? We've kind of gone round and round with this one. So again, this is going to take some conversation with the Parker administration to figure out really what's the necessity of that, and to what degree is spending a whole lot of money worth it. So we're going to, one of the items, this is one of the items, we do want to get out with alternates, and just try and figure out what our real options are. This is one of those areas that's going to require some conversation, so we can figure out what we really want to put this up.
When, can you repeat when the priority item B, when does it need to be completed? The end of 2018?
Five years after, after the state cuts, we had submitted to the state, I believe it was the end of 2013.
Yeah, it was December of 2013. So we're looking at next year, next summer.
When those priority Bs need to be resolved and taken off. And then, to continue on, Parker, this is not identified as a life safety item currently, but in the time since the life safety survey has taken place, you know, some conditions have occurred, you know, on the roof with, you know, punctures that are becoming prevalent. It is getting to end its lifespan the other half. Currently, right now, you know, the parts that aren't shaded in are currently being replaced now this cycle. And so you're looking at replacing the rest of Parker Junior High's roof, and it's the next summer to kind of get that back up to, you know, warrant, to be warrantable conditions. I know the, the new edition isn't showing here, but that's not shaded anyway, that's only three years old, so that will be up for replacement at this time of the year. But also, in tandem with Parker roof replacement, is that in these interior classrooms under here, you know, now would be the opportune time to try to work through the mechanical systems that have been somewhat problematic in this area. So trying to holistically address both the mechanical systems and the roof in that area at the same time, seems to multiply the tune, even though they're not currently listed as life safety items, and all this add amendments for a roof system that's, you know, failing is not the right word, but it's coming to the end of its useful life. So those could be added on as life safety amendments, which potentially could draw life safety fines if, if that would be available based on the taxes, right? Also with Parker, I don't think it, I don't know what this is, this year. So some of these are the, kind of the cost breakdowns of what we've kind of shown here in the memo that was reported in the packet. Most of the priority B life safety items, including Parker mezzanine as a dollar figure that we had kind of put in originally, along with overhead and profit of a general contractor as a stated project, the contingency allowance is around $670,000 to kind of complete out the rest of the life safety priority B items as previously identified. The next things, where Parker's roof replacement mechanical systems are kind of a bigger chunk of things, just as of the roof area that Parker has, we're looking at about a million dollars to replace the roof, the remaining roof area at Parker. Replacing the mechanical systems of those interior classrooms, and this isn't just necessarily problematic ones, but all of them that kind of have the same vintage of equipment, would roughly be about another million dollars to make sure that all of those systems, as were in that area, become updated along with it. And then potentially as alternates, there are some spaces that aren't air conditioned currently, that are kind of the western classrooms at Parker. And so potentially this would be, if we're doing a big mechanical package along with Heatherhill and Parker, to kind of use those mechanical subcontractors, you know, suppliers and folk, to be able to get, potentially get air conditioned. you know, suppliers and folk, to be able to get potentially get air conditioning and fully air conditioned Parker Jr. High down the road as part of this kind of holistic project that happens. But those all, we kind of told up for those extra items, including the, you know, the soft costs and contingency costs, would probably be, I think it would have, that was around $3.1, $3.2 million for the rest of things at Parker. For kind of the combined, you know, $3.8, $3.9 million package that would be looking to get that out. So what we're, you know, I'm just interested in these things, these items of what, you know, trying to take what the life safety items that we have remaining, plus some of the conditions and concerns that the district administration has identified that have been problematic that we're, you know, looking to rectify in this kind of next package. So we would be looking at the next board meeting in August for just kind of approving, authorizing us to move forward with generating those construction documents, working with the administration and the staff to make sure that all the communication is happening, that the resulting documents reflect what the need is and what the wants are. So that would be, you know, board approvals for us to move forward with that process to potentially put drawings out to bid beginning in November, to receive bids in November, show, present to you guys the board beginning in December, and then for initial review, and then for final award potentially in January. Trying to get this out a little bit earlier so we can get contractors that haven't, you know, booked up their schedules too much too early, so that we might be able to get a little more competition as opposed to wait until April, or not even April, but even February, March, for awards where some contractors might have their schedules booked up and potentially move forward. So to look to try to get the best price and best opportunity as possible. So other than that, I know there might be some more discussion on it at the next board meeting, but I'm here to quietly answer any questions or concerns or comments that you'd like to ask.
At this point, though, you know, Heather really is, that's the piece that has to be done. Those mechanicals are life safety, they're priority, they have to be done. Our risk is all conversation. The egress will have to do something because it is listed as a priority B, so something's going to have to take place, whether that be shutting it down or working on creating an egress and what that looks like. The idea is that we want to start this conversation real early because you've got a lot of issues with this piece of your construction plan and kind of the end of this life safety survey. And so you have a lot of options here, some alternates that we're going to want to kind of piece this bid out in pieces so that you have some options. I know you, you know, look further down on your agenda, you have board committees. This might be a good one to pilot.
I think you just heard me.
Because there's going to be a lot of conversation and a lot of things, you know, a lot of options, a lot of things you want to toss around, and how long is the financing, and how you want to handle that too, because you do have options there as well. And so, you know, this is the very, very beginning of what's going to probably be committee items that you're going to see on probably almost every board agenda until we start whatever it is we're starting. You have a question?
Oh, yes. So life safety is items that the district identified or items that the state came in and helped?
It's items that we as a design professional get brought in to identify based on code analysis of, you know, active codes and building codes of health life safety codes.
So for, as an example, the mezzanine, is that currently grandfathered? Like, sometimes there's codes and then because it's been existing for years and years and years and it's not being used, and I'm not saying I'm not going to do it, I'm just asking. Is there an immediate need that has to be done because the state is there? If you don't do this, then there's another issue beyond just the construction piece. There's a violation that the district had.
Well, from my understanding, that when the state approves the health life safety list, that is kind of their, you know, acceptance of those conditions of those violations, for the identifying of those violations. So the state doesn't come back through to look to make sure that they've been resolved. That's, you know, what they rely on us to do for them and come in, sign off that these items have been handled for this hard line money and then, you know, this is what we put in for it before, this is what the actual work. So I understand the question of grandfather condition. The scenario that we run across, or specifically the mezzanine, is it's a grandfathered condition in fact that it's existing, but when it was created in the first place, it created a non-compliant condition. So it's, you know, we came through and identified it has an existing non-compliance. So it kind of starts the catalyst of having to rectify it. You know, it's, it's not really a grandfathered condition. Like, sometimes I know like-
So it wasn't, it wasn't a code in 1970, whatever?
That would be our assessment of why we put it in. Because we had, when we put in a violation, we have to identify which code violation it relates to. And so when we put in an item, it says this is what the code requires. This condition does not meet this identified code. And when we identify it based on existing buildings, especially older residences, you know, we address it at the code of construction at the time, not of the current code, which would require maybe even more stringent things. But when we identify it as a life safety item, we're saying that it doesn't meet this code under its own vintage of when it was created. So some of these are, I'm not saying they're district created, but they were, you know, created well before everybody hears tenure. But it's a condition that is inherited, but it can't be weighed off as a grandfathered condition. Similar to how you can still have non-accessible toilet rooms in a school building because that's kind of grandfathered, it wasn't required when they were created in the first place. But once you touch them, then you'll have to bring them up to code. So that's kind of the realm that we kind of followed in our wits. So a grandfathered condition is more of, it was compliant when it was created. It's not now, but so you don't have to address it because it's, it was when it was created. But the mezzanine and the condition that's pretty around it is not really a grandfathered condition.
The items that you've identified in your PowerPoint, and it's too identified for approval of health life safety items. Tell me what that means.
Well, it's one of those that aren't, during our survey, some of the conditions did exist, like some of the punctures and some of the things that Parker's roof weren't existing conditions at that time. Since that's been done, the roof has gotten, you know, it's three to four years older, it's getting closer to that time period of, kind of, life expectancy. So it wasn't identified previously as a life safety amendment, but if the condition, if you were doing a life safety survey now and we saw those conditions up there, it would definitely be applicable as a health life safety item. And so we can always add health life safety amendments, add new items of these things that get separate district approval, separate state approval, that kind of get added to the list. So that just allows you, if you identify it as a health life safety amendment, that you would be able to draw health life safety funds or use bonding to have, use it as a life safety funding catalyst if those funds were, you know, available to the tax base and to improve this activity. So some of those items where, for like Parker's roof, we would probably instigate the new health life safety amendments, add that in, and identify that as a potential for a funding draw as opposed to forcing the district to pay up for it, have its own reserve.
So the roof, though, I mean, it also had no lifespan. When you did the health life safety survey several years ago, you knew the lifespan of that roof was. Why is it a surprise now?
I wouldn't say it's necessarily a surprise. I mean, it was within its realm, but there are certain things that happened in the recent years that have created different conditions for that roof. So some of the stage and weather are different, you know, potentially with its life expectancy.
It was failing sooner than expected. What about the mechanical systems? Those are all, those are all known at the time, right? Why is that being added now?
At the time we did the health life safety survey, I don't think those interior classrooms were having the issues that are becoming sort of now. It's a minor change. I don't, I think the mechanical systems were functioning, but in the recent years, some of those ones are not conditioning space and creating a new environment that they were originally running that process, that sort of process.
Why are you recommending adding new air conditions? Do you think they're going to be a new standard?
That one is included potentially as an alternate as a district request from the administration and the potential staff that, you know, if they're getting closer to 100% their conditioning of Parker, you know, this could be an opportune time to find a price for that. It's not necessarily saying that it has to happen or it needs to be to go, but this could be, in our development of construction documents, to come up with a plan to associate costs and pricing, to even identify what really we're looking at if a contractor would come in to do these things for discussion purposes. It might be out of the realm of availability, that's the board's decision at that point. But it's, you know, it's one of those items that is identified by the district administration that could be, you know, positive for Parker Jr. High.
There's a couple of issues with that. Since we're going to be taking off, we're going to replace that roof area to begin with. The units that you have up there, you're now bringing them up there and doing multiple punctures through your roof, which of course gives you a greater issue where you may end up with leaks, because the more, of course, you can you puncture through the roof, the more you're going to potentially have, have leak issues. Second of all, the units that are up there are creating issues with it in the classrooms themselves, or having some ill do issues. This creates a very humid environment. It's not optimal the way that they are cooling those interior classrooms. To go a different route would make some sense while you're replacing the roof. And again, those are some of those conversations that, they're going to take time and they're going to take some, really looking at all of what your options are. Those DX units that are running over those classrooms now are 10, 15 years old and they're starting to fail as well. So, you know, they're starting to come to the end of their useful life too. Not to mention the fact again, the way that they're cooling those classrooms is not optimal. A chiller would be better, but it's expensive. So the question is, do you really want to do it? I mean, honestly, another option is do nothing at all. It's holding, it's not optimal. You're going to probably end up looking at that in the next five years anyway. It's going to have to get done. You're going to start leaking some, especially when you start seeing those kinds of punctures on the roof, I'm afraid. Is it part of the health life safety items that have to get done next time around? No. It's more of looking at the best sense to bid it all together just because you are doing those mechanicals that other, which you don't have choice to do. The reason that we've really looked at when we make an amendment to the life safety survey really has more to do with which funds that you have the ability to access. Do we want to be able to access either bonds, which is a whole different set of conversation than what kind of bonds they are? But also, do you want to be able to utilize your life safety levy and the funds that we have pulling in from the levy in that fund? Because the only way to use the money in that fund is for the items to be identified in your life safety survey. And we do have funds there, although we'll probably use it on Heather Hill. So it's probably not a necessity that we add to the life safety survey. I love the opinion that it's probably time to do that part of the roof and just get, pretty much get it a lot of the way. But these two items, your facilities are in good shape for quite some time. The next life safety survey we were looking at, there's really not going to be anything major on it at all. It'll be good for at least the next 10-year life safety survey and then the one following, there might be a few items we'll start looking at at that end. But for the moment, you're in good shape. Your bonds roll off in 2024. So, you know, you've only got another seven years on load.
Can you say something about the building though?
Yep, a couple of the classrooms, when those units are being run, creates a very humid environment and we're getting surface milling on furniture and walls and those kinds of things. It is not a whole problem. I'm going to address that right here now. We have had multiple service, we brought them in, we rewound the machines, we have got the air control. It is, it is not, it is a surface milling, but it's still nasty.
So it sounds like, and you've said this, I think, twice now, Brandon, that there are different scenarios of this that we will be looking at or could look at over the coming months. So what exactly will we be approving at the next board?
Well, for proving is for you to give Ray the ability to start putting together the documents that they would then submit out for the bids to the contractors. And then what we're going to be looking at as we go through that conversation is, what is the base bid, this has to happen? What are our alternates that this might happen or this might happen? This could happen or this could happen. So essentially, you know, we put together your Chinese menu of, once we get the costs, you can make final determinations based on how you want to find, what you want to do, and what kind of money you want to spend. Because Ray's numbers could be great, it could be right on, it could be really far off one way or the other. We really won't know until we take it out to bid. So what we want to do is get the most information that we can, the earliest that we can. And that's why we're bringing it now, and we're even finishing with this year's summer projects. Just to get a jump on it, to have plenty of time to talk about all the issues and what you really want to do or not. Any other questions, comments? So this will come back to the board for the underboard meeting. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, approval of assistant principals for Parker Jr. High School.
Had an opportunity to interview her colleagues for the second assistant principal at Parker Jr. High School. We had an opportunity to speak with Mrs. Rebecca Williams. She is a 13-year teaching veteran of science at Parker Middle School in Glendale Heights. She has extensive experience in assessment for learning and honest student evaluation, teacher evaluation, teaming, scheduling. Committee's worked pressed not only by her book knowledge, but her application knowledge as well. It's been very positive about interacting with students, very specifically about how she's worked with children to create opportunities to not extend their learning, but to create a climate that is functional, that is effective, certainly in a junior high middle school setting. And we feel very positively about her ability to be a strong element in the district's school.
May I have approval? May I have a motion please to approve assistant principal, Mr. Grayd, second, and Dr. Grayd, second. Kathy, you're on, please.
Okay, Huggley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Grayd?
Yes.
Grayd?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
And the motion is passed, is she here?
Sure.
We won't put you on the spot.
Thank you for those kind words. I'd like to thank Ford and Dr. Smith and the committee. I'm really excited to be here. I actually live up not to Parker here, so it's nice to be home for my meeting. And it's exciting to be in this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations.
Can we get a picture before you-
Oh, sure.
Everyone else has to do it.
We do lots of pictures. I'm not quite sure we're ready to all end up. No idea what his picture is.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, approval of contract to complete the bilingual speech assessment. All right, well, can I have a motion please to approve the contract to complete the bilingual speech assessment? Mrs. Hockley, any second please.
Second.
Dr. Briggs, any discussion, questions?
Can we just a little context of what?
We need a new provider for bilingual speech evaluations. And this is the person that I'm identifying as going to complete this course. It's time sensitive, we have a 60-day window later to respond to your request for a language.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Briggs?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Hockley?
Yes.
Ford? Yes, the motion is passed. Next item, I M D Summer School Update.
Brief update, Mrs. Martin about summer school, we'll get a few changes from last year's program to this year, so just going to highlight. We will come back to the board towards the end of August, beginning of September, with a full breakdown or more achieving focus on students who were with us for summer school this year. This will give just a brief overview of some of the changes from last year to this year, and again, come back for the fall, by your team.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Smith. I'll keep a brief since I have a full report and then I can answer questions at the end. So, I did embed some pictures so you can see some of the students. So, it is six weeks like was said before, June 19th to July 37th, and it runs from 8:30 to 11:30, Monday through Thursday. We do offer breakfast free of charge for the students at 8:15 a.m. And we get anywhere from 60 to 80 students who participate in breakfast, and there they are. I asked some of the junior high students what they thought of breakfast because I knew they would be honest with me and they said that they like it. It's usually cereal and milk and a piece of fruit and so. We're slowly getting more and more actually, as they catch on to it and hear that it's pretty good, so. We have 376 students enrolled and this is early childhood to eighth grade. We have an EL boost program that we have not had in the past, so these are first grade and kindergarten, primary students who have been identified that are English, language learners that would benefit from that program. So, we have a certified EL teacher teaching that. And then we have a virtual program with 78 students and 23 of those students are in a pre-algebra program preparing for algebra honors at Parker next year. And then also this year, which is new, we have a language starts program and that has 79 students. And those students come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays to take either Spanish or Mandarin, so, yes.
I'm sorry, can I ask how long they're in the Spanish Mandarin program?
Yes, it's four, six weeks and it's just 45-minute segments, so parents bring them, drop them off and pick them up, so. And then 58 students come in and receive services for speech or occupational or physical therapy due to their IEPs and minutes. So, throughout the week, you can have almost 500 students cycling through Serena Hills. So, it's a very busy place with a lot of moving parts. Here's some more pictures. The one on the bottom is the virtual program has conferences at the midpoint, the parents and the students are invited to attend together. So, that's part of the virtual program. We have changed the virtual program. It used to be Odyssey, we're using a couple of different programs this year. I mean, big for the virtual program and assessing it will be the parent surveys and student surveys at the end. To really try to figure out with the program what works best, they're the ones at home using it and what they thought of the programs and that sort of thing.
Do you know how many students were enrolled last year?
In virtual?
In summer school?
It was a little over 300, so we did have an increase. I tried to do a lot of advertising and putting it out there, so this is the highest they've had in years.
Of your 23 pre-algebra students, are any of those students going to eighth grade next year or are they all going first grade?
They are either going eighth grade or seventh grade, depending on their track. So, depending on their track are, so I'm going to be, yes.
Is there any thought at all to track those 23 students to really see the impact of the virtual program after they've actually taken algebra?
That is a good thought. What we're doing for data and to track what we do into the course, they are giving them a pre-algebra assessment that mirrors the assessment they give at the end of the year. So, the students can see where they are if they're ready, so you will be able to prepare data and see how they're doing. Like that, so that's the data we're going to use for the algebra. But I will definitely take note of that because that would be an idea of track if they went on and were successful in the program based on that. A huge change this year is having a structured curriculum. So, with math, there is pre, there are pre and post assessments for six modules and there is a huge focus on growth for the students. That is data that I will be bringing back in a couple of months, collecting pre and post so we can actually see that the growth the students had in math. Students are writing every day, that is a change in the past. We know that writing skills are a target for our students, so every day writing is embedded in the lit camp, the curriculum that the teachers are teaching. There is high interest literature and choices, their resources are extremely plentiful. I will have a formal survey of teachers and some of the older students at the conclusion of summer school. But the informal feedback teachers have given is that they love the resources and the curriculum. They appreciate it so much. It covers a multitude of specific concepts, so there's plenty for them to pull from for their range of students in their classroom to meet their needs. So, that's been great, yes.
Are these students who are having a little trouble during the year and are taking some remediation or are they kids who want to get a jump start on the next year?
It is open to everyone and so it definitely, we do send out letters. We send out about 300 letters to any students who scored in the 35th percentile and below, recommend even if they attend. So, those are families and students that we've reached out to. So, we do get a lot of students for remediation, but we also have a range of abilities. So, when we structured summer school this year, we looked at their math data scores and structured classes accordingly. We actually have three to sixth grade classes. So, we were able to kind of meet their needs. Another thing is class sizes are very small, so that has been great this year, so that it can be intensive and focused on what the students need, so.
Do you have any other ratio of audience?
How many students are there for remedial versus regular, is that fair?
Well, I mean, just in terms of adult to child in the class?
Oh, yeah, we only have one class that has more than 20 students in it. Typically, it's 15 to 16 students in a classroom, so they're very small, you know, that's. And then classrooms also have parapros and then a specialized classroom, these have support that way, you know, full team. Curriculum training was a full day this year and spoke about with the school board instead of a half day. Teachers also really appreciated that, they were able to really immerse themselves in the ELA training that we brought in in the morning and the math in the afternoon. I think that was beneficial. And then also, a great suggestion from the board was to make sure the curriculum was in the teacher's hands when they left on the last day of school. And we did that and they also said they really appreciated that. There was some downtime in between summer school and the last day of school and they were able to look over the materials, pre-read some of the books and prepare. So, we just had some more thought with some different things. Reports are going to be a little bit more in depth that we give to parents at the conclusion. Teachers are going to have a list of areas that are strengths and areas that are targets for the parents and the students so that they can know what they're attending at and what they still need to work on going to school in August. We will also have assessment topics in math and the actual concrete scores that they receive for the parents from the post-assessments. And then we're going to give those reports to their teachers in the fall, their homeroom teachers that they get in August so that they can bridge the gap between the spring, what the students worked on in the summer and what they need to do in the fall to hit the ground running. The other thing we did was make sure that all the teachers got their students' math data, so they were really able to pull up their sleeves and jump into it because it's only six weeks, so. I cannot speak highly enough of the team that I'm working with this summer in Summer Academy from the teachers. We have special education staff, nurse, custodian, the parapros, the secretaries, they're awesome. They come with so much energy and excitement for the theme of Summer Academy and it has completely worn off of the students. I have had very, very few behavior problems, the students are excited, they're there, they know for growth. They're being confident about themselves, they can go back in August and have seen some of the concepts and so it's been really great. Data and surveys, like I said, for data, I'm going to bring back some concrete data for you in a couple of months and some survey results ranging from virtual survey results to results on the onsite curriculum and like I said, on food, parents, teachers, students, so you can get a full idea. And like I said, I just think the changes have been such an awesome team and the support, the growth mindset that everyone's had. There's a literature camp theme and everyone has gotten really into it, the students and the teachers, you know, from putting up fire, you know, on the board, like a campfire. They started circles, they really focus on social emotional learning with these students too, and it's just made such a difference. It's one-to-one devices for the students, so that's been great for teachers to have small group and then also use. DMAT Live was the onsite portion that came with the math curriculum. And it's been nice because it's given the students a break from Odyssey and it's something new, a new program that they can log on to. Small class sizes definitely made a huge difference in being intensive. And then just the feeling of celebration, on July 27th, we're going to celebrate the students' hard work, the students have been phenomenal. I love working with them, the little ones to the older ones. And just even the Summer Academy here, with those drawstring hats and it's really cool to see the students using those and wearing those around. I'm proud that they're a part of Summer Academy and learning this summer and they deserve a lot of credit that they've got the opportunity to school and some of their peers are sleeping in, so.
Any questions? What's involved in the celebration?
There is going to be a treat off the approved snack list. I'm hoping that it's great weather and we can go outside and I've been asking the students and they definitely want me to play some music over the intercom outside. And so, they're looking forward to that, maybe some dancing if they want. And then just a lot of praise for them, the teachers, because they've done awesome. And I look forward to tons of growth and writing samples too, it's the other thing we're going to review. They did writing samples on the first day and then they're going to be writing samples on the last week, so we can have some partial lists, see how their writing has improved with them writing every day.
So, I know you're planning to do a news letter as part of your communication plan. It would be great to include some sort of blurb about the Summer Academy so that the community knows that this is, I mean, I think people, you know, I certainly see the buses in the morning when people probably don't really know what's going on.
Right.
So, this is also a great way to just highlight the work that's been done home this summer, it's a great, great motivator to be here, but we want people to know that there's been stuff happening over the summer months, so maybe just find a way to highlight that. And then, you know, along with all the pictures that we take at each board meeting, and I don't know where they go, let's make sure, you know, take pictures of the celebration event. I mean, I would really like to start seeing more of what we are doing on our website.
Next question. Television devices, so the free ones, they're not using iPads or anything like that, or are they?
Yeah, they're not taking it home from Summer Academy. We are not giving tons and tons of homework for Summer Academy, but they do have iPads or MacBooks that they're using.
Is that true?
Yeah, daily.
Would you also report to the teachers, the virtual academy students, will their community teachers get results of their progress this summer?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. Right, because those elementary students and the other students are taking some.
And just curious, why was French not offered?
Just language starters capacity. That was more of language starters staffing capacity. Steve, we'll work on it right in the future.
Any more questions for me?
Thank you. So, you will be giving a broader, bigger report later?
Yes, a full report that comes with the student data, concrete data for you, survey results, all that, so.
Next item on the agenda, joint board end meeting, this is 153, 161, and 233.
Yeah, this is just a demo of the discussion, we've come up a number of times, going to parse this out a little bit further. And so, one of the conversations, we have between that joint board meeting, there was a focus, we expected out of the timeline for pulling all the groups together. And we're just hoping tonight would be any steps that we would want, additional information that we would want to bring back. There's no action for this meeting or even the next one, so it's just not to make the decisions.
Do you know what days are homework meetings for the board meeting together?
153, you're going to have.
Today they paycheck me from Tuesday, correct? And I know that paycheck me to see me for these.
I think it's a great idea, I think my personal question is whether or not it needs to actually be a board meeting. Something so formal.
Well, and I think that might speak to what's the purpose. And I think that, you know, looking in the future, I think it would make sense to have board meetings where we have an occasional meeting, you know, intergovernmental boards in our area. And just to look at, you know, common concerns or things we might be able to collaborate on or address. And certainly, you know, through the superintendent's desk, if people do have a sense of, you know, making that together. And, but I think that it's an initial one, and I remember the conversation, I think it was with Debbie Vermon years ago, suggested, hey, we should have a board session. And I think if the, you know, like going to a baseball game where our kids are playing, you know, who's sitting in the same stance, we're talking about parenting or what's on the board in school. I think that would be fine in terms of meeting, I think that the trouble would be, of course, if we started talking about things that would be appropriate for an actual.
Well, thank you, but again, that depends on your organization, right? So, you know, it's a school board training, your board, your boards, their districts, their board, the board will accept that. So, if it's a formal board meeting, you have a formal agenda, you open that, you have it around the topic, whether it's a speaker or what you're looking at, ways to share resources. That's one way to do it, the social aspect where you maintain some gentle boundaries in how you interact generally, as long as you're not focused on business, you're okay. As long as you're not focused on business, you're okay.
I think generally speaking, for us, somebody out would say, yeah, we should all get together at Wiley Grill. And we should have a socially oriented meeting for it, especially since there's more members. Steve Anderson is going to be replaced at home. So it would make sense for us to have that idea there. Have administrators come too, and allow the faces of the community. And then if members, teachers, you know, other people wanted to, you know, mingle in a lot, we could agree to do the website. And that's something that wouldn't necessarily have to have a lot of background at the event fair. Much in the same way, for a candidate or during other events that happened over the last six months. People had a very nice time. I need to do a good thing for my district. So it may sound like you're, you know, featured as one restaurant to the restaurant is made of you. They turn up the space, people know where it is, it's my apartment. That would be nice to get.
I agree. And it gives us, I think it gives everyone an opportunity to get to know each other by name and face. And I would mistake them for the show or for the speed, but you can still ask. Yeah, whereas if it was a lady from the age of school board. So I mean, I think that's a great opportunity for people to, you know, always say. It'd be a nice work for the community to get to know. And maybe if we're on the edge of the line, that's, you know.
I have a meeting coming up, an in-fall meeting actually, with both 233 and 153 school board presidents. So I'm happy to have that conversation with them and bring back some additional feedback the next time we move into the board. I mean, I'm pretty sure we have had similar conversations with Debbie as well in the past. You know, kind of I see her, she does bring it up. So and I know 153 has been wanting to do something. Actually, so has homeless man. It has been, you know, I think he lives in the district that leads into 161. And he's, we're going to do something, so. Any other thoughts, questions?
Has the community opinion for the board turning before you?
I'm standing.
Has the community opinion for the board, or to the board turning for your final statement?
Yes.
It's not that clear. The attorney general's view of this kind of that, that there's a little bit of a way to blame, like the statute three. And there's going to be clear guidelines on how to manage this discussion. So the attorney general's interpretation is that, we have a thinner specific example provided by the agency's office. If a thinner party turns into a discussion of public difference upon the attention of the record numbers of form, is focused together becomes a meeting for purposes again. So by the agency's view, four of us at some point are focused on a particular topic that becomes a public meeting. And the statute varies a little differently than the statute suggests, we've heard in passing, but it's got public difference. But it seems to me that that factors into, do we make it an open to the public? Do we post a forty hour in advance just in case it's a deeply public meeting over the point, violation of it? To inform the board.
Sure, my Kayla.
Moving on to the next item, board committee. Continuation of the conversation that we've had at least once about establishment of board committees. And I think one is a suggestion, or maybe a couple of suggestions of the committee specifically for curriculum. One for communication, community engagement, and one for budget. And it sounds like, I think, certainly the capital improvement, the life safety issues could fall into that category as well. I'd like to have a discussion about it again. I certainly in favor of establishing committees. I think I'd like to start with the communication and engagement piece. There's a lot going on and there's a lot to messaging. I think we want to get it out in front of them. And then I think the budget one, because it shows the budget time. And I think we have both from the committee who have a lot of talent and interest that I think provides support to the board and to the community. So just thoughts, questions, comments?
I have a couple. I think we form committees, second form committees. You're going to run it through a problem. One is you're going to sort of issue create and correct over time. And second is you end up being just a safety. I would suggest that it would be better to simply organize committees to tackle this problem. So we have a structure question before the board related to the board presentation we just saw. And it seems that we should form a committee to address that problem and then that committee will go on to that. Another example would be, you know, I know Steve wants to do, improve our focus on community relations. If it would be appropriate for a committee to do that, the committee should end and die at this point. Otherwise, in my personal experience, the committees end up sort of floating away from being board and losing their purpose. And it also makes it harder to know what's going on. So my suggestion would be rather perform two committees to take the forming committees. Let's identify the ones that we want to work on and form a committee to address this.
Any thoughts?
I would, I would say that in, I believe on top of that, whatever the committee that form should really tie into the superintendent's goals and priorities throughout the years. Certainly that would be, you know, a discussion we would have in the formation of those committees. I think that the, I would imagine that the budget, a budget committee would be something that would be something more ongoing. So I agree that there has to, should have a purpose in terms of the short term and long term. I don't think that necessitates that if there were a committee for, say, community engagement, that, okay, you have to meet twice a month for ever and all time. But yes, yes, there should be some idea or some purpose or some reason why it's, it's that. Which I should tie into a priorities committee.
So you, so do you, are you in agreement with Cameron that there, that these committees should have a, a
Well, I'm not, no.
Getting it in or certain shelf life?
I think that there should, I'm not against having a consideration on hand if we get to a point. But I think, you know, like our five-year goals, it should be something that we come up for review. Is this relevant now? And then we got to a certain point. Here's why I think that we should have community engagement as a committee, is that I don't think enough. Do you're playing with, hey, where are the futures going? You know, on the website, you know, that's, that's an aspect of communication that I think we need to work with. You know, at the same time, we hire an expert and everything should be in conjunction with the administrative staff. It should never, I don't think a committee should get feet up in the station if you're in a home. But I don't think we need to say necessarily, okay, here's your task, you know, you did your task. It's over. We get a committee for the practice tool, where we selected the tool, we reviewed it. We ran it for a year, we met again, we reviewed again, and now it's, there's no, you know. Lisa is, is not on the board, who was chairman, so it's, it's. In itself, in essence, I think that if you have something that, like, community engagement is an essential part of work function, you know, it should continue. It, I don't think necessarily has to meet every, you know, every other week. You know, but at a certain timeframe, we determine we need it, or we think it would be useful. Is that, it's a pro-merger. So I don't, so yes or no?
Okay. Any other thoughts?
So I actually, I think maybe more of the finance committee. As opposed to naming it a budget committee, because the budget committee is a point in time, which of course, the finance committee would want more budget. And it's really to that. I think that's not a question we have to say with all the things that are happening in the chair. So, but I do, there's certain things, and bringing the camera as far as the social facility things, like I said last time, which is their facility. And so as written as paycheck and things like that is, I would probably lean more towards that finance committee than the facilities. But, but we don't need to meet all the time because some of those issues should aren't there all the time. And so they should, you know, that's more, that's all, but I don't, I think it means our, that we can.
So I didn't mean to get sidetracked in the discussion into other hypothetical issues. What I really mean today, we've talked about quite a while, it's just that, of course. Steve wants to do human relations, file meetings, let's be sorry. Esha, I think, wants to do finance, but doesn't want to do construction. I totally understand, and that's what prompts my, I'm going to just, you know, construction would probably be maybe a benefit for a smaller committee. But it's, it's the finance committee. The file meetings, let's figure out what our priorities are for these, for them tonight. And if we're, this is what you're going to come up on.
So then if the idea that we still did committee of the whole, please become separate extra that will come back to committee. They will, John, shake your hands again? No.
All three board committees, you would disagree on the committee of the whole, in that committee.
So then what if issues that are unrelated to finance or community engagement? So we, we are not getting rid of the cow meeting immediately. I mean, so I think in one of our conversations in one of the board meetings was the list. Let's start small with a couple of committees and then figure out what is the longer list of committees that makes sense for us to have. And then we revisit the discussion of whether or not we think this is working. Should we stick with the committee and get rid of the cow, or this is not working, let's just go back to the original way of doing it.
Transition.
But I don't think, yeah, we can't, you know, just go co-term. Get rid of the cow. But essentially, you know, that would, that would be the direction that we could be moving into. Unless we decided that this, this, this structure is just not working for us.
And I think it would be more like a report out, Merle reports out on, you know, the speed report. That, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily, you know, you don't have to repeat the meeting that you went to. Do you have a summary? Is there anything, no, is there anything relevant? Any given questions?
Okay, so we start after the discussion saying budget, finance, whatever it is we want to call it. And community or communications, engagement, whatever it is we want to call it. You have thoughts?
Community engagement, we do more flexibility. Certain covers communication and recommendation of finance.
And then with the recommendation of the finance committee, did that include the budget as well as the life safety and capital improvement stuff? Or will we create a separate committee just to look and give Fran support on the life safety, capital improvement stuff?
I think we're going through the finance group. There's some challenges to talk about the, the construction piece of that, I think we can go ahead in different ways. But ultimately, some of those decisions around our network that we're creating, I don't think.
I have a question. Maybe I'm not understanding, but I want to make sure that I have. So when we're talking about finance, when we're talking about budget, rest is tonight, bills, that deals coming up. That now go, like I made, I didn't make.
So perfect example of a construction piece. Conversations about what gets done, probably should happen with all of you. How it gets done, whether it's bond issue or whether it's fund balance, that recommendation will probably come from the financing group. But the feedback that you provide to that group, what are your assumptions that they're going to make? Long-term financial number to take, and ultimately the recommendation back to you for edge. You don't want to give up your voice on those pieces. I think it would be just very clear on how we will maintain your, your ability to shape the work.
So I have a question. And I think you asked that last time, besides the presentation, asking first of all, whether it is the board or is this staff that is reporting one, is obviously, I would work with her, so.
If I can, like, jump in a little, I've worked under that structure for many, many years. And essentially, I had a finance committee that sat and went through more of the minutia, things that the full board doesn't want to be sitting up here going over for hours. If there was, you know, stuff that's going on, stayed, we worked through even some of the details. If we're looking at doing a construction project, we looked at the multiple ways that we could finance our structure. And the committee came to some answers that this is what we think should recognize the full board. When it came back to this forum, I still gave presentations, but the committee chimed in on, yes, we spent a big, you know, intensive amount of time speaking about this, and here's where we landed and why. So it was kind of a combination, but I still gave the full presentations and the committee members jumped in on, yes, this is where we spent a lot of time, or, you know, whatever their input was. And then the full board would act and have the opportunity to still ask questions.
Okay, so it sounds like we are in agreement with the community engagement committee and a finance committee. We will, you know, the committee will add some structure around how many times we need and that. I'm happy to take volunteers who would be interested. I know Steve is very much interested in the community engagement piece. So I'm happy if you want to play the role and take the role as chair of that committee, that would be fine. I think it would be great if there's at least two members on each of the committee. Three, then we have to open the act and report, and yes, so the three is fine as well. If we don't want to, you know, we're going to keep.
Close session.
So our, you can either just call me, shoot a email, if you want to chime in now, if there's a committee, one of these committees that you're interested in. If not, I would also be happy to reach out to folks who I think would be awesome on these committees. So is there anyone else who's interested in community engagement? Yeah, I'd like to. Anyone else? About the finance committee? Anyone else? Anybody else? I will happily reach out to members of the board. I will work with Fran to find language that makes the finance committee sound like the most exciting committee. We didn't have that. Not the minutia of. We'll talk it up, Fran. But, okay, so we will start with those two committees and we can discuss when sort of the first meeting will happen. But I will reach out to others to see if I can twist your arm and volunteer to the finance committee. Make the motion. Okay, I'd like, I would like to make a recommendation that the board may have for filing committees for the 2017, 2018 school year. The first committee. The first committee is finance committee, and the second one being the community engagement committee. Ms. Huckabee? Mr. Graves?
Okay, Simmons?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Yes. Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Of course. Yes, and the motion is passed.
Next item is item G, NSDA membership in annual and the tri-conference discussion. We're going to bring more information on that.
This issue is just dealing with the approval of, renewal of, uh, membership to the National School of Sports Association.
And the motion, please, to approve our membership for the 2017, 2018 year in the amount of $2,675. Oh. Ms. Huckabee?
Second.
Dr. Graves? Can I have your roll call, please? Okay, Paredes?
Yes.
Nelson? Oh, sorry.
For bringing $2,675, is that?
Yes. For membership for the National School of Sports Association.
No.
Briggs?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Of course. Yes, and the motion is passed, and your conference is completed.
No, no, this was just a reminder.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda, Public Act 099-0922, testing for lead. I'd like to recommend that the board of ed approves the quote from Engineering, Inc. in the amount of $97,970 to complete the requirements of Public Act 099-0922, testing for lead. So, Ms. Huckabee, first. Dr. Briggs? Can I have your roll call? Oh, is there a discussion? Is there a discussion? Questions?
I just wanted, we are kind of, this is what we talked about last time, Scott, and he said every, all of them.
Correct, all the facilities.
What was not included in the act would be tested.
Correct. Which, which is additional Parker and Normandy.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Of course. Yes, and the motion is passed. Next item on the agenda, I'd like to make a recommendation that the board of ed approve donation from Mr. Alan Castro to fund the STEAM program at Serena Hills in the amount of $200,000.
It's moved.
So, Steve first, Ms. Huckabee second, in discussion.
The lengthy materials that were attached, is that the organization that we intend to go forward with?
That's the information that the board has been done up until this point.
It is, and we put the thing out for bid. It's a lot of money that we're going to allocate to this, and I've only seen one organization's approach to how to do this. Is that how fast to do it? And we looked at other organizations and how they might implement this pilot program?
Yes or no? I think, you know, they looked at this information, I'm sure, sorry, sure you're familiar to the family of it. I looked at this information, also looked at Project Lead the Way, which is another model. This isn't the recommendation of approving this model, so it's just information that's been done and work that's been done up until this point.
Are we approving?
You're not approving.
We're approving.
Receiving the money. That's it. And then we come back, you know, we brought back information, not only on the government launch, or the pilot program, you know, we'll want to tighten all those pieces up.
How are we going to get the money? Is he going to write us a check for $200,000?
Well, we, per our board policy, we would accept, um, essentially, you do two ways, one, cut the check, or, uh, two, identify the pieces that we're going to forward out, until we receive the money, and then go, have the press board receive upfront, and then we determine the scope of it.
But I imagine things like the materials from Great Money System would be part of the motion to this individual, so that he's going to be getting some value.
Oh, absolutely. Right, like I said, it doesn't have to be this program. This would be the program that the team has identified, that they were going to, uh, go through those materials, we can, we can quote those, we can get those pieces, uh, materials-wise, so this is what the committee.
Is there a chance when he can do this thing and he doesn't have the money anymore? Doesn't want to give it anymore?
I think that's why we asked for the donation to the district upfront. So we're just approving the money.
So, we're approving a willingness to take the money.
Correct.
We have a walk-through operationally, how we're going to take it, how much we're going to take, what we're going to do with it once we get it, until we spend it or commit it.
By, by board policy, that's all that you're doing, is accepting the money, because officially, you receive a difference. And then, you can determine it by policy.
So if we, so let's just say, I, I'm kind of bored in here, I mean, we're way too busy than the same. So if we accept this money, is this money tied to using that program that we, so no matter if we choose, non-do, whatever?
We're only accepting the money. The additional information that's included is the work that was done by that committee when this originally came up last year. So it's only for additional information.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I do think when Sherry presented it, there were several questions and items that she was going to come back and bring to the board before any decision was made on the what.
Absolutely. I think a lot of that is included in this material. Again, the hours come back, because it's larger terms, we're still piloting this program, not only at Serena Hills, what that looks like at the other elementary buildings as well. And I think, uh, you are, as recommendations, accepting the funds. What would come next would be, this is the official step-by-step pilot. This is what the resources would look like at Serena for the pilot, this is the timeline. This is the measurement process, these are the resources, et cetera.
So I have a look at the material, I agree mostly with you, with most of the questions that I know I asked, or engineers, but there's a couple that aren't. So, first I would say, I think the board should accept the donation, because it, it enables administration to go forward with actually securing the funds. That'll pull for assets for, around the $124,000. I agree that the pool is very expensive, what we've provided. But there's practical side of this, which is, unless we go out and build by ourselves, right? This is a prepack, you know, practically speaking, if we move forward with this, this program, I don't know if this is something you can hack out a bit, too. Just for those of you that are detailed, $124,000, I don't know if you can figure it out. These tables, desks, and most supplies. But we get to create a couple, I think it's most important things. The only thing I see this year that I had, I, I personally had asked Sherry about was, um, and my concern is still here, if we accept this level of money, you know, we spend $124,000 on that. I'm sure we've all bought stuff, or expensive stuff for our kids and had them not build, right? Same thing that happened to organizations here. Unless there are people in the district that are really going to champion this, or that screen up, and then in our efforts to bring this to the other schools in the district, it will fade away. I want to make sure that we bring the greatest possible value that, uh, the paper sponsors generate donation to the individuals providing it. And I'd like to see at some point, somebody stand up and tell, say, yes, I'm going to lead this effort. But for today, I would say, you know, I guess personally, I won't be able to accept the donation, so that we can show, um, the donor, what he was doing, or what he's paying. But John's concern, or Cheryl's concern, right?
And those of you that don't, I'll tell you, after bidding Project Lead the Way to previous life, Project Lead the Way is used at the high school, even aggressively seeking resources from other vendors, I was looking at about $30,000 per classroom. In a 20 section of elementary school.
My concern was, I looked at the materials, right, we're talking some desks, and some tantrum monitors, and some supplies. My, my gut assessment of it is, if, if, let's say we had 20 community members who were going to work, I mean, the actual cost of materials would be probably, there is a ton of dollars that would be included, then, well, this material for this lunch, and the rest, or the rest of the dollars for the community. As best I can tell from the documents, we can provide a marginal value, we're getting, riding free for wood, or some were free for wood, I'm not sure it's worth, what in my mind, if you had the $74,000, we'd provide some of that. And they're also providing us a free magazine table, we don't have to out-track those, so. They are being quite free for wood.
Well, when you talk about, you know, who's going to take this and run with it, if, if you do not generate consistency with the resources, it will eventually. So I think it's, it is, it's an exciting opportunity, because, what Nelson mentioned, it's a great opportunity for kids. It could be a lot of these to figure out, board members can identify as well. I think there are things we want to talk about, just structurally and philosophically as a district with response to next generation science standards, and what is, these opportunities will be for kids moving forward, how fast we move with the pilot, how fast we expand it to the other, so, one of those pieces. So, it's an excellent first step, uh, before your last step in this process.
Is there any other unranked, John?
Can you do a roll call, Kevin?
Okay. Hey, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Of course. Yes, and the motion is passed.
Agreed.
Next item, approval of donation to Heather Hill.
And this is another opportunity, uh, Dr. Beal has identified, um, he showed me that Heather Hill was able to receive a grant to support their STEM work as well, not only for, uh, hands-up kits and resources, but not only, along with some trips and some professional development, so. Do you want to add anything?
Sure, it's, uh, it's one of the resources, John, and, um, it's a fifth grade grant, we're able to get that to a parent, sharing it with me, so I'm going to hand it out, and we got accepted. But it's going to give us a bunch of materials for our fifth grade teachers to use with the students who've been in a classroom, about $3,000 worth. It also pays for a fresh development of those two teachers that actually go, um, to, to, two and a half different sessions to learn about STEM, how to fully integrate it in all, uh, discussions within the classrooms. They also, we also think a project, we can get all the futures for that. For instance, uh, we may, uh, we don't want to turn behind the wind and the energy. Actually, we're going to go to wind farms and things like that, to be able to participate in those type of projects. So it's just an exciting thing to begin the ground stages of integrating STEM within our, within all of such areas within our classrooms.
So I think that's fantastic, I think it'd be more fantastic that you were a grant writer and you are a successful grant writer, so that's, no. But I do have one question, and I'm guessing Ms. Crawford might know what the question is? So is, I mean, I think these are great activities as well. Is this something that could, um, in the future, be covered by Title I?
Oh, this grant?
The activities that he's, um, proposing to use the grant for, could those activities in the future be covered by Title I funds?
We could look into that, but we would have to look at more what the actual activities flesh out to be. If they include, generally, if they include trips and materials, that's fine, so.
Any other questions? Okay. I'd like a motion, please, to approve the acquisition of the Energizing, potentially, yes, grant for Heather Hills. So, Ms. Huckabee, can you second? Ms. Blackman? Can you do your own call, please? Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Of course. Yes, and the motion is passed. Next item on the agenda, National Investigations, I'd like to recommend approval for the contract with National Investigations, Inc., to approve the most specific residency investigations as warranted through the board, through the District 161 registration process. I need a motion to approve this.
It's moved.
Ms. Graves, and your second, please.
Second.
Dr. Briggs. Any discussion?
So just to clarify, this is not, you know, as I originally meant, this is not based on the prior discussion to be approved in the process, this is just right by the way they do now.
Correct?
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Of course. Yes, and the motion is passed. Next item on the agenda, fiscal year board, fiscal year 2017, 2018, board topics. This is the discussion item, right? So back for review, I don't know if anyone, um, I'm assuming everyone has looked at it, I don't know if members had specific questions, concerns, if you want to quickly talk about August, if there's something that's missing, if there's something that should be moved around, um, just want to make sure we've got our year covered with all possible important topics that we need to get covered for.
So, we have, uh, our next week has always working, just weeks away, start of school, um, along lines of community relationships, et cetera. We have the staff coming in, and, okay, I know at some time, all of us are off doing things, but how, how do we get to the school year started on, on the right foot, with the message that, thank you, morning, to approve? Is Sheriff Parker in a specific plan to get it done? I can, Fred would start it, and he may need to start it, but there's very little time. I would like to see this guy have a more presentation of that, um, supporting the campaign.
Is that possible, community engagement committee?
I think we need a little more clarity around what the expectation would be, um, for the presentation.
Specifically, uh, so this was a, a common topic, right? This one, pardon. Um, what do they, is there any difference? On a, almost always, I would note, uh, I think that it would be important to get our new administrators out in the community to meet people. I, I personally would be happy to oppose this, and, um, I know the board members are still doing the same thing. As early as before, maybe, but I think it needs to happen, you know? I would like to hear, I understand I may be asking for a bit much, um, what is the plan going into next school year about addressing the various problem areas that the school works upon? I don't expect you guys to say, we're just going to make everything better, um, but, you know, what's the plan?
Well, I would say that's September 25th probably is up, because I think that, that's information that would be recommended by the building leadership team and the building administrators, and the teachers working in council together, and bringing scope for the plans back. I think there's no way to, you know, really share that information in a way that will leverage it. And it must be a collaborative approach to developing those commitments, and, uh, we have a presentation, but ultimately, I don't know if it will generate the action.
What trouble it is, is September 25th is well, it starts. Can we at least let the district decide what our focus is going to be at Parker, for the school year?
I think the building administrators and teachers will decide and have that plan in place from the start of school. I think when it comes to the board, it'll be September 25th, just like I can. I don't know that it's, it wouldn't be this board. I don't know that it's, it wouldn't be this board place to recommend how they're addressing this one.
I think. I agree, but we need to get out, we need to hear what's happening.
Sure.
I'm not really looking for the board to say, that's approved, disapproved, or something, do this, don't do this, but, we have, you know, people want to hear what the plan is, and, and I don't think anyone knows.
I think that's given that we had such a rocky start to last year, it's a bad taste. So we have absolutely not approved, disapproved, but more information, transparency, use of discipline, I'd say communication is right up there, just so that you, as a new administrative team, have the highest level of community support possible, and that comes with transparency, sharing before the school year starts. I mean, let's do it really hard on this, the way that it started. I think there's feeling, it's going to be, and it's going to be all right, we might as well, at least this year, because it's going to be great, and everyone will know that. With some confidence.
And I think that, you know, once the new administration has had a chance to, you know, pull it, it's going to take these sixty days to figure out what's happening, you know, backtracking to, you know, research and school, you have to, you know, you have to be in the awe to talk to teachers, you know, and unfortunately, as much as we would all love for things to be, you know, we all know it's happening right now, as though the administrators that are in here, we literally just hope it can be tonight, so, I mean, it's, and I have every confidence that if our administrators can be successful, there's certainly depth of mentorship for our district, it's one of the strengths. But to your point, I agree, that we need to have a very robust enthusiastic rollout, you know, anecdotally, and even when our interim principal for, for Parker was introduced to the community, it was, you know, it was really almost like an obscure part of the media center, where five people showed up, and then somebody left halfway through, it was, I think that we could do more, this is one of my concerns, you know, with, okay, let's, let's try to stay in front of this as much as possible, because, yeah, you hired the best people you can get, you know, the best people around, you want people to be bought in before the kids show up in their first class, so I agree.
Well, I can change it, you know, if there is a ground running, but give us something about our policy hall. I'm going to, you know, number of kids getting through algebra right here, you know, hey, we're going to, we're going to add five, you know, tell me something that they're going to target this year, if the parents are coming to us saying, what are you doing under Parker, we can say, this is the plan, because, or, I'm arguing this question, right, and, and they're going to start getting this question, and it's not, no one's, no one's going to be happy with the way it goes to them.
So, we've had these discussions, I think a lot of these issues would adjust themselves if we had an administrator or building an agnostic measurement-driven strategic plan, because we're asking for administrators who started last week to make decisions unilaterally outside of a number of teachers who won't return until the end of August, about the pathway that they're going to walk and have to commit to for a whole year without having a lot of voices, and I think that's problematic, I think. As we look at community relations, you know, committee of the finance committee, it's becoming evident that unless we have measurable goals that are at the district level that are a true umbrella, it's hard for us to set a direction, because we can't focus on specificities. I think there are things that they are good at the building, and I would tell you, right now, they're not, we wouldn't put them on a marketing, but making sure that there's a schedule that is good for children, making sure that they're, you know, putting teachers in positions to be successful, making sure that they're questioning practices that, you know, may not be as supported with public gatherings as we want, those aren't the big loud things that we think are, but I'll tell you, they'll make an immediate impact for children and for families. So, to Cameron's point, I'm hearing him really share about getting the administrators out, getting them into the community to start one of those relationships, too, telling our story, you know, the story of the building, collaborating with families, collaborating with community members, working with teachers to really generate a plan that's focused on building improvement, but then telling that continuously, and then, nine twenty-five may be too late, we can play that date as our schedule, and that's where you'll have some to, this is what we're going to do at Parker, this is what we're going to do at West, this is what we have to go with, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We are working on those July thirty-first and August first, so if you do want to play with that date, you can certainly.
Yeah, we know, certainly, and, and, and certainly historically, we know that Parker has, definitely has ambitions for certain one, you know, problems, politicians, idiots that say, we're going to do this and do this right away without having the chance to, you know, know what it is that you're walking into, as well as what the challenges and challenges that people are, to be able to address it. That's, I appreciate.
I guess I would say, even if Parker were perfect, it's nice to hear, this is our tagline, this is our hope, this is, it's nice to hear that from the people in charge, or vision statement.
Vision, yeah.
You know, I mean, so maybe that's, yeah, I mean, so maybe that's where we can start, and then, whatever, September twenty-fifth, or whatever dates, you think, that's where you can, we'll hear more specific details about how this vision will come in or come to fruition. So, I, I agree with all of the comments, I mean, I think, I think it needs to hear something, and I think you get that, and you can appreciate that, what that is, and we can bring it back to the board meeting and talk about it some more, I guess, but we do need to communicate, and we don't want the first day of school to be the first time the community is hearing and seeing our new administrative team. I mean, I agree with Dr. Greis, we want to make sure the community, you have all, you hired all the community support that we absolutely need to have a fantastic year, and not just Parker, but all of our schools, so, we just need, so, yes, we need to get out in front of the messaging, and we need to figure out what that is, and we don't want to overpromise, because we don't quite know what we're promising for yet, but I think a vision statement will be, or, something along those lines would be huge.
So I, I need to press on for clarification, because again, if we, yeah, making those connections, I think relationship-wise, this is true, if you plant a flag, and it's not consistent with where we're going as an organization, it creates more chump, right? So if you say, I'm looking for a mission statement, are you looking for us to get out and say, hey, here's the Parker mission statement, use it for District 161 visions, what we've all committed to, or are you looking for something new?
Kind of what you said before, this is going to be the great, the greatest year happening, like the general kind of enthusiastic, head rally, we're going to work with this new team, we're going to have lots of collaboration, that makes people feel like, you're excited, we're excited, everyone's excited, it does not have to be.
Yeah.
Hope your finger.
Right. Lions County had a great slogan one year, they just, it was like, every year they come up with new things, and they really liked the one they had the biggest year, so, so when I was there, their slogan that year was exactly the same as last year, but only better, that was their slogan, so, man, I was, people got the joke, and it was, as to say, we're not going to keep rolling out anything simply tangling, but, but I think that if you, it can be something that's, you know, not bound in rock, you know, in the building, but, you know, something that we're all going to sort of rally around at this school. You know, again, to your point, well.
I agree, I don't put it this, you know, the challenge of coming up with that, is that, you know, at elementary, it's three people at junior high. True. And if, we, the challenge is turning it from a quote that is in the paper, in the picture of Parker, to actions that generate changes for students, and there's, there could be a disconnect there. So, I'm with you, I think we have to get involved, I think we're going to do that, we also go ahead and teach it as well, first, so, opportunities to form those relationships between the administrators and the community, we can absolutely get those out, show them the quality of people who are brought into our team, and generate some excitement and some, some connections there, and then I think we will have to work, as I said, on thirty-fourth of July, August, continuing on the institute days to really solidify some of those pieces, and then I think we talk about that, continues to prove a model that starts next April and May, and you go into the summer with road plans set, because you have your data, you've identified what's going to happen at the start of school, so we can have those two or three months to prepare and to work, right? So we can, we can work on all these pieces, sharing our story, and generating some set around the schools. Is there anything else here?
To the extent you're, you have suggested that our insurance would be planned, not sufficiently big for this competition, when do you think it would be as important to make that pass? Any other discussion?
Probably three months, realistically.
What's that?
I, I think, really realistic answer, would probably be, depends on what purposes. The purpose is to generate measurable goals for this school year that are far reaching, and run from those early childhood classrooms, all the way to the middle-of-grade science class, you're probably talking about, if you were talking about some short-term tactical pieces that we could use, that are probably more process-oriented, focused on data that you can gather quickly based on what's happened without, you know, whether it's youth and discipline data, or some of those pieces, some structural pieces that we can gather in a number of minutes, you know, students who are behind literacy or receiving every day, what happens to those twenty-three students who are in pre-algebra, who are in seventh grade, what happens to them, we can generate some pieces on those, but those aren't, those goals would be tactical, and they're, they're solid, and so the people who are involved in those, we want to have goals that drive the work that we do every day, that spend every additional professional development class a teacher takes, because it is that compelling, it is that important to us, that we have committed all this time and energy and effort to collaborate around. So, I think the working strategic plan is good, we've seen all the things, it's a lot of good people that work on it, I think we may just want to look at how we're going to manage some of those pieces, and it could be an opener, it could be some time to just to go to that, and we'll have to determine as a board what goals you can go and sell to the district that are independent of anybody in this room, because they're the best things we can do.
Seems to me more should be before this school year starts. Some, some, I think everyone here, we appreciate that you're, we want to show a goal down the track, so it's a hundred people, or we've scored morale, or whatever, but we have to do something before August, that's my, I don't know if you all agree with me, I think we need to put some plan in paper, I don't care if it's a, it's a really tiny goal, or we have to do something, otherwise we're just going to tread for a year till we, till we roll around to the next, it's like.
There are goals, and they're measurable, they're just not measurable, students achieve the goals, that means they're, you've got them more process-oriented, they're focused on climate conditions for learning, as opposed to the direct nexus of student learning, opportunity, student achievement.
So it sounds like we need to have something on the agenda for August, December. And we can have a deeper conversation, I think we can provide feedback, any questions between now and, is that August team, a lot of weight?
It is, but it gives us an opportunity to share, because you have a particular strategic plan, if there's some natural, again, natural pieces, we can tie an indicator to it once a matter, and with the sight of, it's a tactical goal, we're getting into the next six, twelve months, but ultimately, we're also looking at those goals for the next three to five to eight years, that we want to accomplish, there's school districts that have incredible things, goals that people never thought would be achievable, but it's that, it's that fine line of a compel goal, with the resources and the expertise that we have to pull those off, no, no one in this room is going to cringe, because to set a goal that is incredibly challenging, that's what we do, it's having time and commitment and the singularity of focus that we can generate momentum necessary to achieve.
I think even on the fourth team, if that's the venue that you choose to have community come in, the administrators, even if there was some element of state of the district that helps people understand that you are aware of our needs of the community, I think that would be helpful, I think fifth grade parents of this district are terrified, because they think it's a problem, and they need to know that least likely the worst person possible, they tend to be afraid, and that you know what has gone on, if you're aware of their vision and concerns, kind of the state of the district is, and that they, they will be better, I think, if they believe that you believe, it's going to be better, and it's going to be okay. I, I agree, I can't wait for the concrete, but until then, before opening, that message is really, that's what I'm telling people, without any concrete, we hire the absolute first.
Will it work you open to your changing venues? You could go someplace, move a party, I think it's a very big job, having your partner, you've got a whole new administrative partner, and then Dr. Gillock as well, those are, they'll generate a lot of, a lot of interest, so. Should you guys use?
Yeah.
Right.
Are you talking about for August?
Yeah.
Do you still remember when Uncle was a kid?
TBD, okay. Why these real, actually, that is an awful, that is an incredible facility, if you've not been there, so maybe there's that, our first intergovernmental convention, we can be, we can see it, it's all good.
Okay, so, Zach, you're in here, you did the, you shaded the Nelson. That's two of them, are the starting ones one that you are no longer at, or seven of them?
I think that's twenty sixteen, seventeen.
Okay.
So, yeah.
No, I would go ahead and take that one.
You know, yeah, we, the, I started the conversation with, Dr. Pop about the, we were saying, January, February, we're, we're looking at things that would happen every two years, so, your organization, just so you know it's on there. Yeah, and there's kind of some, some annual, there's one there as well, you know, it's another, some tests along the way.
Do we want to move up to nine twenty-five, eight, school group plans? That's what the plans will come to the board, nothing there.
My thought on that is, I, whatever, it's like, you know, the capo, I think it'd be great if we could present tomorrow, but it's not, it can't be done until, you know, August something, let's wait till it's actually done, so, I, however long it takes for the school program plans to get there, based on pacing and, you know, what we, what's working in the past, I don't want to, I don't think the board should be rushing it. And, so I think whatever, you know, where it needs to be here, should be here, and I think part of the logic behind this particular calendar was so that. And I think part of the logic behind this particular calendar was so that it would give us a chance to look at things and say, oh yeah, that's right. We, you know, in May, we, we did want to look at, review the tool again that we used for evaluation, you know, just as a yearly thing.
It's not particular.
Sure. So, yeah, this is sort of being looked at. So it's that you're not surprised from now.
What do you drive those group of plans in September? I mean, just here aside, should we start to move into the summer time already?
It's just, it's the physical act of sharing them, they're done before school begins. So we'll have spring data, we'll have the park data, which is my last, and teams will work using that as a secondary. Politics, fact, we'll be somewhere between ten and eighty percent and a hundred percent finished on policy versus. That is just a matter of timing, all of those we said. Planning should be the, the collective group for teachers and administrators.
And I'm thinking, isn't that also one of the five essentials is reported out too?
It is. Need to verify, but I don't believe we took a class. So is that data, but yes, yeah, so that will push some of those. But realistically, if we, our scheduling is bound by our time in time, so I can start, we have to school it out. Because you'd rather have a lot of that work finished when you have two months to meet and train and prepare. So though when school is, school just starts. You have the plan, case in question.
So I guess my personal view is, I agree with Steve, because I like individual girls. Soon as our principals have the ready, um without asking the work all day, you know, they're on the hand to go. But structurally, in the future, I don't, I think, I agree with your current.
Pardon Stephen?
Well, we have a mandate as a point in progress, so Parker has never been here. They have, please, they've been on Howard's data, I don't know why. Can't wait for the state. So we can't wait for the checks.
Right.
Is there anything, is there any more discussion on the school year board topics? Okay, now we'll move on. Your business items? And I know, um I know you have executive session on here, but I don't think we have any agenda items for executive session. That's a first for me. Okay, great. I think then that is it. And I would like to, the motion to adjourn. The move, second, all of favors, say aye.
Aye.
All of those? All right, you have your turn. Thank you.